We'll go ahead and call media board. Thank you all for coming today. And Secretary Trump, we will call please. President Eric Eishen.
Here.
Trustee John Williams-Gill.
Here.
Vice President Deanne Maynor.
Here.
Trustee James Wood.
Here.
Secretary Mary Powell.
Here.
Trustee Bud Pike.
Here.
Treasurer Erica Willard.
Here.
And Superintendent Jeff Mantai.
Here.
Please rise to the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any comments or concerns?
Yeah, it's pretty thin.
I can see that from the podium and state your name.
Amanda Richard, 19th grade. Guess I'm just starting real quick to give you a quick background. My son started in seventh grade. So he has been seizing or burning middle school cross country. As you guys know, Mr. H retired last year, which is sad. However, he left a really strong cross country program behind him. The blow up was soft and a little bit by his leaving. The fact that we had two really strong assistant coaches, who are both runners and are apparently still competitive runners that helps the kids. They did start running July 4th for voluntary practices. So this kind of brings me to my two points. I'm really a little concerned. This is not the new coaches call up with the fact that the state of Michigan pushed back middle school getting old to start until the 27th. We're not starting practice till after the first of the school or after school year starts. So that's because their kids, three days of running. A lot of these kids, we've only had 10 about on an average, running with Mr. P. And so we only have three days of running before their first meet, which to me is a big safety issue. But again, that's somewhat limited by the state of Michigan pushing back debate. My second issue is I really like the school board and the athletic directors to maybe consider publicly posting our future coaching positions in the Weekly Guardian. That way the public does have the ability to apply for the positions. The two individuals that I talked about earlier, I knew they probably want to get the position because there is teachers that did apply for the position and they would get the position over him. However, the fact that they haven't assisted coaches the last several years, I do feel I was wrong and they didn't at least get the opportunity to do so. Somebody listed that and I talked to somebody that the concern of this is you guys are going to get 20, 30 apps for one position. I personally look at it as a good thing to have a little community that 20 or 30 people are willing to help our kids succeed. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or concerns? Please state your name and address.
Wade Sears, do you have my mailing or?
Yes.
4760 Blackmore Road. Last year it was brought up the idea of waiting AP classes and it's come to my attention that this has not been addressed before. So I was wondering if maybe in the near future we could address that. So maybe AP classes could be waited for school.
Are there any other questions or I'm sorry, comments or concerns? We will move on to actually the yellow sheet. Because we need to amend the agenda. So we need a motion to amend the agenda to go into closed session.
I'll move. Support.
Moved by Deanne, supported by Mary, to amend the consent agenda to insert closed session as item J. So it's moved by Deanne, supported by Mary, to amend the consent agenda to insert closed session as item J. Is there any discussion? Call those in favor. And we will move on to the consent agenda. So this is the motion that the Board of Education approved the August 13th, 2012 agenda as amended. The minutes of July 9th, 2012 regular meeting. The minutes of August 7th, 2012 special meeting. The bills in the amount of $500,157.04 we approved for payment as presented. The P card statement and in the general fund budget report and food service fund budget report as of July 31st, 2012. Moved by Deanne, supported by Bud, that the Board of Education approved the August 13th, 2012 agenda as amended. The minutes of July 9th, 2012 regular meeting. The minutes of August 7th, 2012 special meeting. The bills in the amount of $500,157.04 we approved for payment as presented. The P card statement and the general fund budget report and food service fund budget report as of July 31st, 2012. Is there any discussion? Call those in favor. We'll move on to correspondence. In enclosure one, we have the school log notes. And enclosure two, we have the ISB board groups. And then enclosure three, we have a letter from Christopher Tremblay, which I'd like to read. This is dated July 17th, 2012. It says, Dear Mr. Mantai, greetings from the University of Michigan Dearborn. I am writing to you as a 2012 participant in Palm, pedal across lower Michigan. Last month, 800 cyclists stayed the night at one of your schools. During my ride, I logged 326 miles as we cycled from St. Joseph to New Baltimore. Thank you for opening your school to us during our cycling trip. I was very impressed with the hospitality of your staff and students. As an educator, I appreciate the effort they all made with your leadership support. I am grateful for the work of your team in support of this recreational ride. It shows statewide and community support and a commitment to health and wellness. I hope if Palm returns to your site in the future, the same level of enthusiasm and support will be shown. Best wishes as you gear up for the 2012-2013 school year. Sincerely, Christopher W. Tremblay, Assistant Vice Chancellor for Enrollment Mankin. You'll amend to four. Thought that was a nice letter.
Troy and his crew and custodians deserve a lot of credit.
I remember I was driving home and I saw a lot of vehicles. Then I drove by on Saturday, I think it was Saturday morning, the next day, and there was a bunch of people leaving.
No.
No, real well. So maybe it wasn't Saturday. And with that, we will move on to the informational reports. And the first one is the daycare update.
Mary was in chat.
I dropped it in the. I'm sorry. Casey's daughter.
Call the daughter.
So she said she would come back in, you know, to the next meeting or another meeting, but she just wanted to let us know that it's not as full as they initially anticipated, but they had to enroll today. And they have 17 children, we're full time and part time. And well, it's great to have children enrolled full time status. We do not employ a full staff if we do not have full classrooms. So then she just goes on to explain that why we're not full. We've discussed this in the past. And what do they think that the center will look like in the fall? And they think they'll have up to 30 children. So it's just information and she will be coming back to us. So if we have any questions, just hold them in. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll follow up on that. I had Tina double check the numbers for just the summer. And there was, I think it was $21 that we just were over in what we had to spend. In other words, our expenditures and our revenue was $21. So for servicing the students in the community, it cost us $21.
We did say that, you know, we wanted, we'd have to give this a year to see what's going to happen. We knew it would be lower until people, you know, started school, got rid of their daycare.
Now Troy finally had the information from the board.
Of course, everything, money. Not your money, that's me.
I'd like seeing him now.
I think everybody has this. So the rare construction. Obviously, this is, they give us option A, option B, and the option C. And I'll just tell you, the option A is MIS or used grandstands out of MIS for our home side. Option B is the visitor side. The home side is 1,200 seats. Visitor side is 500, or 400, I'm sorry. And then option C is what it would cost new. And I'll run down option A, which is the home side, 1,200 seats. The 45,000 for used for the materials. And then the new materials, and if you read down the new materials, include press box structured with landing. Now, that's someone, it's the flat part that our press box would sit on. Right now, the plan is to lift our press box off, set it on the ground, build the structure, and then set our press box back up. We're almost, we're 98% positive that can happen, but until we get moving and get a crane operator out here to actually say, yeah, that's not a problem. We don't believe that's going to be a problem. So that is the original plan is to take ours off and set it back on. So unless a crane operator comes out, this is absolutely not something that has to change.
Does that mean that the line item that says new added materials is not necessary from this bid? Or we would still have new materials with this bid?
The new materials are the press box structure, which is the structure that our press box would sit on. And then the front walks.
Okay.
Wheelchair ramps.
Gotcha.
And entry stairs, wheelchair spaces.
Okay.
So that's the new. Now, a couple of things that you have to understand. The concrete footings and flatwork are guesses. Those are his estimates. It could change, it could be lower if we could find a good deal. Maybe someone in town would help. We could get it for lower and then we would save that money. Those aren't, those are not exact numbers. Installation, that is 26,000. The crane rental, it could be more, it could be less. That's again, an estimate. So and then the total is 183 and then minus 14,000. They'll buy our bleachers for $14,000 from us, which I think it was 80, end of the 91, we paid 32,000 for them. So I was here with the installment, one of the first few years I was here. So I had a 93, or 33,000. So, which equals 169.5. And then option B, the 47,000, exactly the same thing, the new materials. And that says what new materials would be and then the estimates. And then what they would sell brand new is 262,000. And that's just for the home side, 262. So the total is 210 for home and the visitors using MIS. The price does not include soil borings. We have to have soil borings. And electric, which will be minimum. Just the electric wouldn't change. We just have disconnected, tear down and set it back up. And then some scoreboard wire. So that's pretty much those three things. Soil pressing, electric and the scoreboard wires. We have to have electrician driven to do. So those are not included in the price. But I wouldn't see that being over $2,000.
Troy, the flat where the press box can sit.
Yes.
As I remember, that would actually be larger than what our press box was. So we could add on, we'll say.
I do, you know, I would have to check. He hasn't, until we actually tell him we want to go forward with this, he's not going to build blueprints. This is the fourth time he's quoted Leslie for bleachers in the last 15 years. So until we move forward, he's not going to build any blueprints. That was the initial conversation. But I know he changed it by the way that MIS bleachers are set up and the way he had to cut 1,200 seats out of it. Because originally, he was saying 1,800 and then he was going to set our press box down in. So I would have to check or run that with him. But that's one thing I have not confirmed with him on that.
Do you know a timeline?
Yeah, he actually wrote in here that it could be November, December if he wanted them installed. He could actually pull this off November, December, have them done in December. Granted, I think we have to, we would have to bid this out. And it's going to be hard because you really can't bid out used bleachers. So what you'd have to do is I would have to bid out a brand new set of bleachers, get his drawing, bid out all brand new set and then have an option for engineered, say, cost savings. And then they would, option B for that would be new or used MIS bleachers. The one thing I do know, the bleachers would be set higher. The press box would actually be about, the top of the press box would actually be about the top of the seats. And the press box would be another nine or 10 feet taller. So one thing he did say is if we wanted, if this is something we want to do, if you see the used grandstand material for the away and the home, we could purchase that now and then we could do this anytime we wanted. But he can't hold the materials for us without paying. We could pay the 45 and the 14 and you could do it 10 years down the road. And I shouldn't say that out loud because we don't want to do that. One thing is, because he's going to bring them here.
Okay, where?
And I don't know where I'm going to put 2,000 seats of bleachers, so.
That was my question, timeline. When is our timeline? We have to let him know that this is something.
Right now, I have not discussed that. Alls I did is last Thursday, I talked over the quote with you. So it's going to be up to the board and the superintendent to move forward now. What, you know, where do you want to go with this and what do you want to do?
It's hard for me because I really have to see prints.
Yep.
It's hard for me.
Yep. It's going to be a straight set of bleachers from, they're going to be about 20 foot short of each light pole. And then 15, I think 15 rows. But they're going to be at a, they're going to be at an angle.
So they'll be back further too? Because I know that there's always a thought to add a couple more lanes to the track. I mean.
Well, the front will pretty much be where it's going to be because you can't come back anymore due to the drop off in the parking lot. So it's the next, if we do the new set, I think the, he's going to be one more section back down the hill than what he is now and what they are now.
So we couldn't do anything about the track?
No, you'd actually have to go the other way, which you have plenty of room to actually, if someday down the road you want to widen, you could actually go to the east. Yeah, you have plenty of room to the east.
So you said that you originally purchased, we originally purchased these in, was it 97 or 95?
It was 92 or 93.
Okay, right.
Exactly. I have blueprints of mine.
It was 33,000 for the home?
33,000.
32.
350 seats.
366.
So what do we have, I'm sorry, what do we have now?
366, 366.
On the home side?
Yep, not even enough to seat our high school.
We have 200 on the visitors?
Yeah, that's the. I haven't gone out and measured every 13 inches across every one of those. And I'm really not going to do that.
Well, they're getting me spitty, isn't it?
Yeah. Bus seats go like 13 inches. Well, if you look at me, I'm a whole lot more 13 inches.
Eighteen and a half. And so on the visitor side, there's 200?
Yeah, maybe. So it's a matter of communication with him and what you want to do. If you want to save it or, you know, if you at least want to purchase and then talk about it or, you know, just, I don't know where to go from here. I need some direction.
Did you say when we have to make a decision?
No, I have not. I know he could have them installed in December if we wanted to. For next tracks, if, you know, we're gung ho and decide we're going to do it, we're going to figure out a way to do it. If you're going to figure out that, you know, two years down the road, you know, you haven't the same problem you have now, you know, if you figure out how to do it.
How long will the bid process take that you've got to figure?
It will take me probably, probably four weeks at least to run the bid process. To get, it's going to take longer than that because I've got to get prints from him. And then I've got to get on the website and post it and then wait for bids and then open bids and then go from there. So yeah, it'll at least be four weeks. I imagine probably six or eight right now, yeah.
How can it be non-union, non-Canadian?
It probably wouldn't be.
Wouldn't be?
It probably would not be. Yeah, it has to be. Did he, I didn't read that in here.
You wrote that non-union, non-Canadian.
Did he read this, did he write that in here?
Maybe I'm looking in the wrong spot. It's under new.
Includes installation, non-union.
That's under new materials, excuse me, I'm sorry. No. No, is that?
Where are you reading?
On the back page.
Right above the X, close.
Includes, it says includes engineered drives.
Oh, yeah, it would be a little higher than, it would be, it would be a little higher. I have not found that, you know, the roof was hardly anything higher than not, than prevailing. Pretty much most of us in that profession makes the top pay. So it might be a little higher.
If we bid something, that doesn't mean we have to do it, correct?
Correct. What, like I said, you would bid out brand new ones with engineered cost savings options from each company. And then this is Southern Bleacher, which is a division. Rare is a division of Southern Bleachers. So they would just put in option B, used bleachers at this cost. And then we'd say, hey, you want option B?
What I'm saying.
Because nobody can price MIS bleachers. Southern Bleacher has, owns all of MIS bleachers. There's no used bleachers out there.
But if we went ahead tomorrow and bid about it?
Yep.
We don't like either bids?
Yeah, you don't have to exactly make bids.
Where he could do a blueprint, he wouldn't like to do blueprints.
Yeah. I would have to have his blueprints. So we'd have to have some kind of.
So I guess what I'm asking or saying is we might as well go ahead and get the blueprints and be prepared to go that way.
Right.
And then we'll put this on for a discussion in that workshop.
Even if, you know, even if we would have to pay him, you know, $1,000 and deduct $1,000 off from this later down the road, I'm sure you can do something along that line. Because like I said, I think this is his full time bidding plus.
I guess my biggest concern would be, you know, in the future, if we're going to put this much money into bleachers for this field, can we expand the track? Could we possibly, you know, even expand for soccer? You know, is there options to, I mean, we're going to put this.
Your, yeah, your soccer.
I don't want to limit us to, we got these bleachers in now and they're brand, you know, they're brand new, but now we can't do anything with the current football field and track.
Like I said, the track can go to the east. That's, that's not a problem because we can set the visitor bleachers back enough and even up on that hill where they are. And I think we'll still have enough room. And a soccer field is going to, the inside of that track isn't going to change. It's the outside of the track that's going to change because you're adding two more lanes. The inside is your 440. That's not going to change. Your soccer field's going to fit in that. It's just moving. The problem is the pole pit. That's what's causing us the problem with soccer.
But what she just discussed, that was all talked about with the bleacher project was the tracks.
Yep.
And. The initial talk of the bleachers was for our athletic complex, not football field.
Right. So.
Well, I guess if, are we looking at borrowing this money? Or because if we are, we might want to look at what's it going to cost for everyone.
You know, you can.
Take it on a fun balance, I mean, that's quite a chunk.
Yeah. You could, you could move the pole mostly so you could have soccer on there. That's, that's a discussion that you need to have with Mr. Coosno and.
I just, it's. I just, the point is that if we're going to install the bleachers, do we still have options to?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, you can still.
Anything I've got to say, if we're going to put the bleachers in there, we don't want to have to move them if by chance you decide to put the track in, you know, wider.
The bleachers have to be there. We can't go anywhere towards the parking lot. The track would have to go to the east.
But it can go to the east, it's not a problem.
Yep. Yep. So in the soccer field, if someday you want to have a soccer field in the middle of the pole office, that's, that's not going to change. Your inside of your track is still 440. So you have plenty of room. It's just that darn pole pit.
And the high jump pit doesn't affect it?
Uh, no, it's the pole pit that's causing the problem.
And long jump.
The long jump, I don't, it's not so bad. It's that, it's that pit going way out. That was John's concern when I talked to John. We haven't discussed anything else. That's why he don't want to play up there. Because the concrete is so, he would have to bare minimum this field.
Totally another discussion, but I just want to make sure that, you know, if we're going forward with bleachers, that we've looked at these options that we're not totally closing the field down to.
Oh, absolutely.
Seeing exactly the way it is, that we can add track lanes if we decide to later.
It's the pole pit that causes it all. And if you go to a lot of high schools, the pole pit aren't really where they're at now. They don't put a center bleacher anymore. They're off on one end just for that reason.
And with that, you just brought that up. When bleachers are paid for and it's all said and done, I planned on having that scrap metal drive for the track improvement. So, you know, it's an ongoing process. You get the bleachers done and we can work on something else.
Any other questions? And I will leave it up to Mr. Mantai and you as to where you want to go forward. Because it's all about how can you fund this?
Is the $14,000 training value, is that only with this company or would that be?
That's only this company.
And is that if we do the whole project only or is that if we just got the materials and chose to do something later?
That would just be the home side. That, he would give you that with the home side.
But is that, so like you mentioned before, possibly just fine. Just fine, the bleachers at 45. And then, so is that off just the 45 or would that be off the total project only?
That would be off the total project because he couldn't, he couldn't.
He couldn't sell.
He couldn't take ours, yeah. He couldn't take ours until we actually started installing new ones.
That makes sense.
So, yeah.
So what's our wayside look like? If we didn't do our wayside, are we going to have to do something to them? I mean, I know you put new wood on soccer field ones.
The only thing I can do is take the ones, take the wood ones over there. Let's, you know, at this point for 47,000, if you're going to do something, I would, I would say do that side included, do it. If you're going to have to do something, you don't want to take that much out of money.
So basically the used grandstands for the wayside is the same price as what he's giving us for it? You just move ours over there?
No, you can't use ours. He's only giving us 14,000. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's exactly what he told me he would do, seat for seat. And he pretty much did.
Yeah, it's 14 and he's given us 14.
Yeah, that's exactly what he said he was going to do. So he was right on the money for that. So we're getting exactly as much material as he's taken for free. I'm going to leave it here, answer.
Any other questions for Troy and the board?
Just, would, how do you want me to proceed with Rare Construction Roger Cronkite? I mean, I can get prints. We can, I can sit down and talk to him about getting prints and moving forward. And then that'll give us time to think and talk things over and see what we want to do.
Do you remember the last time we bid out bleachers, what the cost was?
Two, okay. For exactly what we have. This was, now this is, you know, like seven, eight years ago. Exactly what we have, one on each side was going to be $135,000. I think that was seven, eight or nine years ago.
So if I understand, keep what we have and add.
One on each side.
So we'd have three of those sections.
Yeah, so you'd end up with nine, you'd end up with about, you know, 1,100 seats for this.
And that was six, seven years ago.
Yeah, that was way before the big metal boom.
So the hundred and sixty-nine is not out of line with what?
No, not at all. Nope, not at all, not for nine years later.
Is this something we want to run for the, for the next workshop to discuss?
Well, I'd say, uh, get some blueprints coming, and then we can discuss it at the next workshop, how we find it, so.
I, I will talk to Roger, and, uh, I will, I will update Jeff.
I will talk to him, even if we have to pay a small fee to get blueprints made by him and then subtract it off the project, I doubt we would have a problem with that. I doubt we'd have a problem with that.
Cause he's gonna have to do blueprints no matter what.
Right.
And if we don't do the project, we just paying for the blueprints.
Yeah, yeah. Cause he told me that was his next step, is to build, is to build blueprints, if, if, he said, go ahead.
But he does understand we have to bid him too.
He knows that, 'cause he did Tecumseh, and that's, that's how I know, 'cause he told, he told me what Tecumseh did. Tecumseh bid out brand-new bleachers with an option for engineer cost savings. Tecumseh installed six thousand seats from MIS, that's their system right now in its order.
Beautiful.
Troy, one last question. Do you have any idea, at present time right now, how much that field gets used between football, youth football, track, middle school track? Could you give an estimate?
Yeah, it's, uh, I think forty-one events.
So that's almost similar to where our high school is in between, probably sixty events there between.
Yeah, yeah.
And the only way we could have soccer is if we moved the log jump?
Yeah, John, John will not play there. John, he didn't even like playing ping pong game, uh, there, because, uh, there's mounting bolts that stick up that hold the high jump, or the pole bolt poles, the bar.
The rest weren't too keen on it either.
They, they did not like that.
The rest weren't very happy about it.
But we need to have soccer up there eventually. We need to be able to have soccer there so that we can, you know, engage our crowd and engage the money.
Right. Right.
We need to do that, so it has to happen.
And I'm sure you can move, I, I'm, you know, I'm just talking off the top of my head, six, seven, you can move the pole pit for five to seven thousand dollars. You know, you can move it one end of the football field, I don't know, I'm just talking, I hadn't talked to anybody, I hadn't talked with, you know, sunlight, I haven't talked about anything, so. Uh, and that's all needs to be considered.
But you'd probably have to do watering and everything else, you'd have to do irrigation if you're.
We have a serious problem there, that's a whole nother separate situation.
And you're really talking a lot.
I've talked to Scott Farley, I've talked to Mr. Cuzno, and that, that's really our next step after bleachers, is we've gotta get the, the soccer field water and the football field water. We've worked on that water wheel so much, uh, we're not gonna get another year out of that. So, it's just something we need to share brainstorming. Yee-haw. I'm all about spending money.
Troy's all about money. Does he do that at work too, Pam?
So do you want suspended on your camouflage?
Oh, camouflage, god, mounting equipment.
Next stop.
Move on.
Alternative plan for.
Thanks, Eric.
What I've done is, uh, hey, 'cause everybody wasn't around when this started, um, uh, given, and a little bit of history of the seat time waiver, um, and, uh, and where, where it's been and where we hope it's going. Uh, two thousand nine, the state made doing seat time waiver, um, available basically to all districts through GenNet, which is the GenC area ISD, um, being the portal to buy your courses from. I worked over in St. Clair County for the project where they were doing their own, so I had a little bit of a knowledge coming in when I took the job. So we kinda jumped in in two thousand nine, um, doing the seat time waiver courses through GenNet. The state really had, uh, almost no, um, watch over seat time waiver programs. They basically had to be enrolled in courses, and if they were enrolled in courses, you got paid. Um, the state found out that was a bad idea, um, not because of us, you know, we got paid, um, quite well that year with kids enrolled in the course. There were many schools that basically enrolled a ton of kids and never saw, never did anything with them. So in two thousand ten, they upped the requirements, and two thousand ten, or two thousand nine, they paid teachers during time they weren't working to oversee the seat time waiver program. Two thousand ten, as a budget savings, it came into the administration office, um, and also they increased the oversight, to making sure the kids logged in twenty times during the count month, which basically meant every day of the week, um, during the count month. And, um, I basically did the oversight, and the number of kids we had in program dropped significantly because that was very strong oversight. Success did happen, we did get a kid graduated that year, we also had a kid earn enough credits to graduate the following year, um, that did seat time waiver, both of them were, um, young mothers. And, um, then we met American Academy, American Academy suggested that they're gonna offer more mentoring, which I knew was a strong need, um, based on my experience, is to make the fit successful. And they also had a promise that we wouldn't be charged unless kids were making progress. So we went with the American Academy, and they had, uh, taken it over and basically had the kids, they had more kids, had better outcomes, should be the kids enrolled, they didn't charge us unless we got paid. But I also didn't have the success stories that I had the previous year. So I wasn't completely satisfied, because when I had run the program, even though it wasn't very many students, I had some who were very successful. And we didn't have the very successful students for the American Academy. So, we're talking with the staff, we came up with a plan of the staff taking on the role that I did, but taking on individually and having a stipend. So we came up with a pay structure that is in front of you, that would work out for a staff to take on students and mentor that students in the seat time waiver program. Now, the state, this last year, when American Academy did it, lessened the login requirements, where it was every day of the week, they cut that in half. Which made it much easier to actually count the students, and frankly, more reasonable, um, having a student login every day seems easy. But then I was working with young parents, kids who were supporting themselves with jobs, it was very difficult to get a kid to log in every day. They cut that in half, um, so one of the requirements that we have on there, a teacher would get their first stipend getting it through count. Because the school needs reimbursement to be able to pay for program. If we get the student through that first count course, we receive seventy-five percent of the, um, foundational allowance. But more than just getting them through the first count, the, the thing that I wanted to emphasize in the mentoring process was, we're not mentoring kids to get through count. We're mentoring them to earn credits. So we put in a stipend for the credit a student earns, the teacher would get a stipend for that credit, and that's, I believe, the next thing you see on there. And, oh, third thing you see on there, the goal is fifteen credits a year, 'cause that's what a student would earn sitting in class. Now, I'll be honest, the student who was very successful with me, who graduated, earned twelve credits. She didn't need fifteen to graduate, and she knew that. And she earned twelve because she needed twelve, and that.
It's okay.
That was okay with me, I was, I was pleased to hand her the diploma. Um, we also have a stipend in there for getting them through second count, and giving that second twenty-five percent of the foundational allowance. There are other costs involved in seat time waiver when we do it ourselves. We're not American Academy, we don't own our own courses. Um, and currently, the last rules the state had, they change the rules all the time, the last rules the state had, there's certain bank of courses we can choose from that are approved for seat time waiver, and they have a teacher on the other end. Those courses, you have to pay the provider of those courses, two hundred and fifty dollars approximately per course. Prices vary a little bit, but two fifty is a good, uh, roundabout number for that. So you can see, if we have fifteen courses, what the expenditure on that would be for a student in seat time waiver. And then also, if, if they do not have internet or a computer, we need to provide that for us. And that is in the law, uh, for the whole, or not law, the rules and regulations for seat time waiver. And so, when I did it, majority of the students needed a computer and needed internet, and that's a prospective cost. We, we get our netbooks through Verizon, so it has the internet in it, and it can't necessarily be in their house if they live. Something early in the year. I wasn't, I wasn't gonna pick on it today, since you did, that's fine. But, uh, they can go somewhere and get service with that and get into their courseware. I didn't come up with this on my own, uh, I talked with, um, the union leadership at the high school, and talked with other teachers at the high school, trying to get this structure together. Tried to set it up in a way where we're not losing money trying to educate students. And the reason there's a buffer in there is because we can lose some money on a front end. If I'm enrolling, you know, a particular student, I pay for the courses upfront. If that student doesn't make count, I don't give my money back. And that's why that, I didn't figure out the cost so that we use up all of the foundational allowance. Because I know there's a certain percentage that aren't gonna get through count, and I'd be tickled if we broke even, to be frank, you know? The, in the previous years, we've, we've done better than break even as a district, we've brought money into the district with the seat time waiver program. But again, that's not the point. The point is to get kids to graduate. Um, and then I did add a little future note in there. One of the things we need to look at is the graduation requirements for the seat time waiver students. And what brought this to light for me, besides my student only got the twelve credits, 'cause it's all she needed to graduate, online courses for physics are not designed like our, there is no, I wanna call it armchair physics, or, you know, physics for consumers kind of courses available online. The physics that's available for online students is full-blown, you're going to college science physics. And having that in hand in our graduation requirements, we may wanna think about changing. And we may wanna say, you really don't need as many elective credits, you know, to graduate. We want you to make sure you do the core graduation requirements to graduate. Again, the goal is to give them what they need to be productive citizens, to get that diploma. And it's an individual high school diploma, it can be different than a public high school diploma. We have to live in the best interest of the kids, so that's laying it out for the future. Questions?
So right now, in order to get an individual high school diploma, you still have to meet exact same requirements as a public high school diploma?
Yes, at this time, it's the exact same requirements.
So we would be paying these kids to get electives as well as their?
Yes, when they need an elective and they decide to take, um, trying to think of a stranger.
Electives are online.
History of the nineteen sixties, um, that's, that's just the one that comes to mind, it's actually a pretty nice course. We pay for history of the nineteen sixties also, um, and that's their elective course, so. Even though the Michigan merit curriculum might require, I'm guessing now, forty-four credits to graduate, we require fifty-five. Those extra eleven credits.
Are mainly electives.
Yeah, and we, we still pay two hundred and fifty dollars for credit.
Do you know how much we spent for American Academy last year?
I didn't get a total from Tina on that, um, I would say a rough estimate, somewhere, I would guess about eighty thousand dollars.
And we had no kids get enough credits, credits to graduate, or anything close?
I, I have.
Is there any kind of data in terms of the progress that was made, how many credits?
Yes. I haven't, hadn't brought that with me. Now, their credits, we have to double them because they, you know, it's just like a transfer from another school. Maximum credits earned by any one student was five for the school year, and I wanna say there was two students who did that. And I've got, I wanna say there's twenty-eight students who they took care of, I need to count to be sure, and of the, of those students, a total of thirty-eight credits returned.
Thirty-eight credits. The goal is to have each earn fifteen?
Yes. I, that's why I'm bringing some forward.
I, I'm sorry, that just jumped out, I didn't even say.
You were whispering to mine, weren't you?
Actually, I was talking to myself.
This is a small clarification question, um, the cost for the class provider, if I remember right, um, when I've been looking into these before, there's like, um, companies, organizations in Florida, Colorado, and so forth, that we purchase the class through them, and that's what provides the materials, that's what provides the course, so that we can get right.
Yeah, and we have, there's some that are state-approved through, through GenCISD. And so we buy them from GenCISD. I use a lot from Amental Learning, um, which is owned by K-12, which advertises all over, um, television. There's also Lincoln Interactive, um, University of Lincoln, Nebraska, University of Nebraska, but Lincoln, which is a different company altogether. Um, Virtual Green Bush, uh, those are good legitimate companies that have, that love this.
So, okay, this is, maybe I said this already, but we have to purchase the, we're basically buying kind of a license for that class to, for each student, right? So we can't like reuse that class for another student?
No, yeah, we're buying a seat for that student and actually tying with that teacher at the other end too.
Okay. So they don't complete it, then, okay.
They don't, yeah, they don't complete it, we don't care.
So they take three days of that class, then we spend the money and?
Actually, I get a refund in three days, but.
Bad number, ten days.
I think, I think after ten days, I'm first up. But, uh, usually, you don't know in ten days whether the kid's gonna be engaged or not.
So what is the, so for your proposal down here for twenty twelve, what is the, um, I, I mean, what does this involve on behalf of the people here? How much time is this, would they be spending?
Well, it, it depends, I mean, my, the time I spent on it is I had a meeting once a week, I bought the kids pizza, and we met at the FLC building, and, you know, I tried to build a little bit of rapport with them and talk about their classes and, and stuff like that. Teachers could do it individually, they could meet them at McDonald's, they could, I can tell you one thing, if I was mentoring a kid and they only had eight logins during count month, I'd be knocking on their door with a laptop in my hand, um, saying. saying, make sure you log in. But that's what we're trying to get, we're trying to get ownership of, of kids' success. We want a teacher to be following up on and saying, hey, you haven't logged in in three days, are you okay? Did you sit? You know, did you get overtime at work? What's, what's happening? Because we want the kids to graduate, that's, that's the bottom line.
So we spent eighty thousand dollars on American Academy, but what did we take in? How many children were?
We took in more than we spent.
Right.
We had twenty-eight, twenty-eight students with American Academy, I just double, double check my counts here, or twenty-nine.
So we had to eat for twenty-nine students?
We came here and T did, we got them for both counts.
No, we came here and T, we got them for, I don't think we did get them for both counts. Twenty-nine different students throughout the year. I checked with Rod, what we had on first count, but I wanna say it was close to twenty students.
So really things, it's not, for the two thousand eleven system that we have with American Academy, it's not a, um, fiscal calamity, it's just that it was not successful. Because we didn't lose money on it.
No.
But it's just that it hasn't worked, so we need to do something.
Hasn't worked to, to my satisfaction. Um, I, I think there's, there's more that can be done. They might still be right for some students. I was talking to Jeff, a lot of students who, who wants to get back in the program here, who lives actually down in Jackson. Well, we might not have a teacher who wants to mentor them, and maybe American Academy could do more than nobody, so.
One of the things that Mr. Rogers talked about was actually trying to involve some of the elementary and middle school teachers that maybe these students had a connection with, you know, in their younger age, younger years, so that they can be some of the mentors. We just had the high school teacher, you know, you mentor.
The same requirement, it's just a licensed teacher.
So you think we got at least the, we received at least the initial, um, foundational allowance for all those children?
Well, I, I don't know how many, because some of these came in later. I think it was around nineteen kids or twenty kids in the first count.
The first count, like nineteen kids.
Well, how would you choose who's going to mentor the student?
Will will host, um, more mentors, and then.
And does, does there seem to be an interest in doing this with the staff?
When I ran it by the staff, and I, I wish Will was here to kinda suggest, I mean, it was basically, when's the lottery? When, when do we get to draw our student? They had a strong interest at the high school. I was pleasantly surprised. You know, they, they wanna see kids graduate too, um, but they only have so much off time and their time is valuable.
But they wouldn't get a stipend unless the child got through first count or second count? I mean, so.
Or impressed.
It's the same as, as American Academy, we weren't charged unless the kids were successful.
And their, their definition of progress and my definition of progress were a little bit different. That's.
Right.
That's the only.
Well, we want.
We paid, we paid them, we paid American Academy six hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
A rough number. To have a student, and the student had to complete so many assignments, and then months later they went on warning status. And if they didn't do so many assignments that next month, they went, went on a different status.
More warning status.
Yeah, probation, I think there's warning status and probation. If they didn't do something that next month, then they were off.
All the whole time they were getting paid for those three months, even though they were on probation and.
And that, that was one of my, my issues with it. Now, I could've gone in and actually kicked the student out and saved the district a little bit of money, but I was hopefully we're gonna re-engage. So, you know, I knew we weren't losing money, so I wasn't.
Right.
Anxious to get them off the books.
Do you have any data from the first two years in terms of the number of credits completed in those two years, just for, you know, comparisons?
I can, I can get that data for you. Um, my recollection, in the first year, we had over twenty students and, twelve credits earned was in the neighborhood of ten.
And then how about the second year?
Second year, I know with two of the students, it was seventeen. And then, uh, probably another. I had five friends too, one of the students dropped out, so we're probably looking at, if I work with these kids, I'm trying to remember, about twenty-three total credits. It was really about, um, five students who I worked with most of the year. There were some who came in and didn't do anything. One of them got incarcerated probably through.
So this is different because it breaks down, the twenty twelve proposal is different because it breaks down, you know, basically sets goals and puts monetary work. I'm, I'm looking at two thousand nine, I mean, are we going back to that then, is that?
No, well, two thousand nine was.
I know there's different requirements, but it, there was a teacher that oversaw this for one year.
Then there was no, no stipends for.
That person was just paid to do this.
They were just paid to make sure the paperwork was in order and make phone calls to the students. But there wasn't the incentive, and I think having the right person in the position helps too. You know, um, and I think anybody who's gonna apply for this because they know it's performance-based is gonna be getting into it because they think they can have five kid or credits.
Okay.
So, um, what needs to happen next before, um, we can, I'm assuming that this would have to have some type of TA with the, um.
We, we'd have to have an agreement with the union that we can do this, and this would be one that, um, unlike a letter agreement that we have tonight, this would be one I bring back to the board for.
Right.
For your approval, because of the, um, because of the magnitude of what's in it, so.
So were we, I'm sorry, one last question about American Academy. Are we done with them? Are we, did we, I mean, should, should we choose to go the same, but were we under contract with them, or are we penalized in any way that way?
We're not penalized in any way. In fact, we can still maintain them.
So we don't have enough teachers that want to mentor them who're still using them?
And, and they have some kids who are kinda on their caseload right now that I wouldn't really wanna pull away, you know, because they are making some progress, again, not at the pace we'd like, but. I, I would be more selective on what kids go to them. I think we do more, more in-house.
This is just an alternative to, not necessarily a replacement, right?
No, I think baby steps is the gold.
Our staff feels they can be more successful with the children.
The high school staff does, and I know Jeff has mentioned it to at least one elementary staff member, and they feel they can too, so.
Makes, if it, if it makes children graduate, that's all we.
My, my thought, just with the, the table down here, I, I like this table, so I appreciate you putting it together. I would maybe like to have more discussion around the specifics of the table, um, because personally, I think that more emphasis should be placed on, um, the students actually earning credit. So I would rather have that number be higher and then getting through, and I understand we get paid, paid for the counties, but the ultimate goal, or goal is to, um, you know, get the kids credit. So that's, I'm just, I, I like this idea. I still wanna think about it a little bit more. And then maybe figure out how we could put more emphasis on actually students earning credit as opposed to just getting the, um, stipend or the foundational allowance from the state.
One, one of the reasons I had that, that foundational allowance piece so high, Eric, not only did we get paid from it, but it's also, I don't wanna say easy to earn, but it's a nice upfront payment for being involved.
Yeah, but, I mean, to be this, to be cynical too, though, I wouldn't want that teacher to get the child through count, and then be like, well, I have my five hundred bucks, so it doesn't matter if I get my next hundred dollars.
I'll take four kids, because if I can get them all through count, not that anybody would do, not that anybody would do that, but you've got.
That, that's really my concern, you know, and that, and it's not, again, it's not that I think that that's the ultimate motivation, but I think if, if more, if more emphasis was placed on earning credits, you would get, you would get the best of both worlds. You would get the kid through count, and then the kid would also get, um, the, the credits earned as well.
Right.
So the, the teachers would still earn the same amount of money, and then the graduation rate at the high school would increase because we would get more kids to actually earn credits. That's fine.
But we're gonna pay for the program too, you gotta get with the count, so.
I think the next step would be work with the union, you get a final access.
Well, and union's okay with, uh.
Right.
Again, I've talked to the high school leadership, I haven't talked to, um, Dan, but I've talked to the high school leadership, and they're okay with this, so it's a matter of, if, if the board's okay with the proposal as I have it written. It's just a matter of the high school talking with the full membership.
And it also, you know, this is kinda like what we did with the mayor paper, the, the, you know, policy that we'll, we'll go on today. This is a great starting point, so maybe for this year, this is perfect, and then for next year.
We don't buy any earning credits.
We look at it and.
Right.
And revitalize, so.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Amy. Thanks for putting this together.
Wild one hundred. Troy and I went out today, um, it's progressing nicely. Drywall, we're up, they're actually mudding drywall over in today. They're starting, um, some siding. They had primer, all about eight inches of the front. I don't know why they stopped there. On the siding, they were doing some of the, uh, the roof work. It was the slow, tedious part of the roof work, it was over the, the, um, window and over the mechanical area, so. They felt that was gonna go, we talked to one of the roofers, they felt that was gonna go fairly fast, so. Even though when we mentioned someone being up on the, the steep pitch, and he said, oh no, we're just gonna put a harness on somebody to throw them over the edge, so. And that's basically what he said, so. But it's coming along nicely. Still, I don't wanna project a date, but I think we're still on target for a time in September. And we're need, we need to look at getting, uh, some inspections going, and Troy and I talked a little bit about that today. So that's where it's at. They've done the cement work, um, and it looks, it looks quite nice, so. That's where we are on the wild one hundred.